Okay, we'll double it.
Okay.
Zero, right?
You're talking the right way.
Twice as much as nothing.
It is this talk, so I'm going to assume that the live stream from the township is live at this time. Obviously, we cannot start yet because we don't yet have a court. Let's see, Mr. Stern, Mr. Flansbrough, and Mr. Isaacson are the ones who promised they would be here, so I expect to see them in a few minutes, and then we can get started.
Ally, I'm gonna try calling them right now.
Okay. Somebody just signed in.
Yeah, Adam.
Oh, it's Adam. Hi, Adam. You're not a board member, you don't help. Levy, hi Levy.
Hi, I'm on.
Thank you.
Okay, one more to go, right?
Oh, Bruce, hi Bruce, thank you.
So we have a courtroom?
18.
We have a courtroom?
One, two, three, four, five, yes, we do, thank you.
Okay, so we have a quorum, so, Mr. Jackson, are you back? Mr. Jackson stepped out for a second?
I'm here.
Okay, do you have your flag handed?
Has joined the meeting.
I'll go get a flag, give me one second.
Okay, an American flag, please.
Hi, Jeff.
Justin there? Hi, hi, Justin, how are you?
I'm your chairman, hello.
Okay. Okay.
Here we go.
I'm calling the meeting to order, please rise and let's salute the flag. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America to the republic
where its extent one nation
under guard
indivisible
with liberty
and justice for all.
Ally, can you please read in the certification of compliance?
Yes, yes. Location of this published in the Asbury Park Press looking forward in the office of the township, Bigwood, eight hours in advance. Public members are to attend this meeting, and meeting minutes of this
I am wanting to
This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you, Ally, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sable's here, I didn't see you, I forgot. Mr. Flansbrough? Mr. Flansbrough?
Is he on mute?
Did we lose him?
He's there.
We might have just lost connection, perhaps. Skip him for the moment, Mr. Hertzell.
Yes, I'm here, Justin's on, I see him.
I know, but he's not answering, it looks like he may just be having internet issues at the moment.
Okay.
Mr. Renner, Mr. Isaacson?
Here.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, and Mr. Flansbrough. Now, we may have to give him a minute, we do have five without him, so we can start on our resolutions after swearing in our professional.
Okay, swearing in your professional, Mr. Jackson, are you there?
Mr. Magno, do you please raise your right hand, do you swear a firm testimony before this court, be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you, let's go on to resolutions. Ally, just please say who can vote on them.
Just a moment.
Yeah, ten, I'm sorry.
That's okay. SD 2440 eligible to vote is Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Hertzell, Mr. Isaacson.
Okay, I would ask for a motion
I don't believe you were here that evening, Mr. Garfield.
What night was that?
That was July 7th, and I don't have you as marked down.
On my calendar, I said, it looks like I was there, but that's okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, I would ask for a motion to approve the resolution?
Move on with it.
Moved, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, number two?
Thank you, SD 2438 from the same evening, this is a minor subdivision eligible to vote, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Mr. Hertzell, Mr. Renner, Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer.
I'll ask for a motion on the resolution?
I'll move.
Moved, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and the last one, SP 2368 from the same evening, same people from the last two are able to vote.
I'll move.
Moved, have a second? I'll second it, yeah, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're on to the public hearing, so first, Ally, do
Mr. Flansbrough, are you there? Okay, we have five without him, I just
Okay. Okay, well, hopefully he'll get on before we start the first one. First of all, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, we do have an application which provided notice, it's SD 2441 from Fifth Point Holdings. I'm sorry, let's try and see who's making noise. I muted a couple people. They provided notice for tonight, but they've requested to carry to next week. I have no issue with that, I'd recommend we make the legal notice until 28th for application SD 2441 Fifth Point Holdings.
All board members are in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, Mr. Jackson, can you make the announcement on number five? I think Ally, it's number six on tonight's agenda. I think you wrote number five twice.
Wrote number five twice, correct.
Number six on tonight's agenda.
Well, it's numbered number five, but it's Hold on, I can't scroll down, is it SD 2441 Fifth Point Holdings LLC?
Yes.
What's the date that that's being carried to?
July 28th.
Members of the public be advised, number five on tonight's calendar, the sixth one listed, also known as SD 2441 Fifth Point Holdings LLC, has been adjourned and will be heard on July 28th, 2020, under the virtual format, those interested persons can look at the township's website as the means that sets forth the means of giving comments and participating. There will be no further notices.
Okay, okay, and, Mr. Jackson, one more, I think number five, Ishiva Torres Khayyim, as far as I know
What's the date that's going to be?
No, there is opposition, I know Mr. Gazarovski's here, and Mr. Gertner's over here, Mr. Penzer's attorney on that, I recommend that we push it off to the 28th, have all parties have another week to try to sit down and work things out, the differences, and we'll also have more time on the 28th to listen to it, I don't think we'll get to it, it's the end of the agenda with opposition. So if all attorneys agree, I would ask it to be heard on the 28th.
Mr. Penzer, I understand that that's acceptable to you?
If there's two attorneys, dear Gron, are you involved in this matter?
Yes, I am, yes.
You never called me or told me, so this is the first time I'm hearing it. Fine.
Wait a second, wait, wait, wait a second, is this Abe?
Yes, it is.
Abe, I called you three times and I sent you an email.
I did not.
I'll tell you why, I did.
I did not.
Come in, that's not relevant to this discussion, you can have that off the records, but Mr. Gazarovski has made his appearance, Mr. Penzer, and Mr. Gertner has as well, Mr. Penzer, the postponement is acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, and Mr. Gazarovski, Mr. Gertner, is the 28th okay for you?
It's satisfactory, isn't it?
Okay, Mr. Gertner? He's not there anymore? He logged off?
I'm here, I'm sorry.
The 28th?
No, he's there, hold on.
Hello?
Yes, are you okay with the 28th?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, and I would ask you again, let's utilize next week to try to work out all differences. The school that wants to be open in September, so, let's try to work whenever we can. Okay, so
That is the 28th of what month?
July.
July, so, members of the public be advised, at number five on tonight's calendar, the application Ishiva Torres Khayyim has been adjourned and will be heard on July 28th, 2020, 6 o'clock, this meeting hall, not this meeting hall, this virtual format, any persons interested can check with the planning board website, that will set forth the manner in which you can complain and make comments at that meeting.
No further notices.
There will be no further notices.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Penzer, Mr. Gazarovski, and Mr. Gertner?
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm gonna give us a couple seconds, just for anyone to log off who doesn't need to be here.
Log off, Ally?
Yes, Mr. Gazarovski, thank you.
Yeah, please, we'll
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Okay, Ally?
Yes.
Okay, now, somebody still
It's okay, I muted Ron, I think he was just having difficulty logging off, but that's okay.
Yeah, I think, because it was crackling to him before, and when he logged off, it was better.
No problem.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gazarovski, good night. Okay, are there any other changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay, so, then we're on to number one.
Number one is application SD 2442 made by Joseph Atlas, it's a minor subdivision to adjust lot line, so, currently two lots, will be two lots.
Okay, Dave, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Ally mentioned, this is a minor subdivision to move a lot line that is gonna require some variances. It's on a corner of Teaberry Court in Kennedy Boulevard West, and what's happening is that the lot line, one property is buying some land from the other property, and the existing dwellings that are currently on both lots are going to remain on the lots. So what happens is that proposed lot 48.01, which will be the corner lot, will need a front yard setback from Teaberry Court, it's 25.41 feet, where 30 is required, this is an existing condition, and the existing dwelling on that same lot is also not confirming with respect to side yard setback, side yard setback is 9.91 feet, where 10 is required. And we're gonna need testimony about whether proposed lot 48.01 will need a variance for parking, what applicant's professional's letter says, the house only has three bedrooms, and it only needs two off-street parking spaces, so it may or may not need a variance, so we'll have to get testimony on that. And then finally, for design waivers, the proposed subdivision line is not perpendicular to the Kennedy Boulevard right of way, so that would require a design waiver.
Okay, thank you, Dave, so, Dave, if I heard you correctly, there are no new variances, all the variances that you said were all existing, is that correct?
Correct, they were not, they were variances to start with, so
Okay, thank you.
If you're changing the lot lines, requires
Bringing up the old variance, right. Who's the attorney on this application?
Question, I'm not sure.
Don't believe there is
I don't think there is an attorney.
Okay, so who's representing the applicant?
I am Glenn Lyons.
Glenn Lyons?
Yep.
Okay, hi Glenn, and Mr. Jackson, could you swear in Glenn, please?
Thank you, Mr. Lyons, there's no attorney for the applicant here?
Oh, it's an individual, Mr. Joseph Atlas, I don't believe he hired an attorney.
I'm just confirming that no one's appearing now.
Correct, that's what Mr. Lyons said.
Okay, Mr. Lyons, I'm looking for it, there, hold on, oh, please raise your Do you swear a firm testimony before this court, be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Engineer.
You're engineer and planner, right?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Chairman, he's here about three out of five meetings, so you accept his credentials?
Yes, I do, so Glenn, please proceed.
I've been slacking off lately. Again, what we were doing on this application stage, we're moving a lot line approximately 25 feet from west to east, we're moving that lot line closer to Teaberry Court, the variances that Dave pointed out are for location of the existing house, so, again, we would need those to keep the house in its existing location, and there's one variant, and there's testimony required on the number of parking spaces, there is no basement in the house, and it's a small three-bedroom house, so, two parking spaces are sufficient, one's in the driveway and one is in the garage. The other item, Dave's letter, is the non-perpendicular lot line, which is the new subdivision line, it is parallel to the sides, so that the lots are basically square, except for Kennedy Boulevard has its little odd angle in that. Other than that, we can address, if we haven't already, the comments in the letter.
Okay, thank you. Any board members have any questions for Mr. Lyons?
Glenn, what's the purpose of the lot line?
Mr. Isaacson? Yeah, please, Levy.
Glenn, what's the purpose of moving the lot line?
Originally, Mr. was own both lots, he's selling the corner lot to someone else, but he wants to make his lot, which is lot 124, larger, so he's moving the lot line over, really just so that the interior lot can have a larger lot area.
Okay, and then just, well, one comment, not on this application specifically, but, when you do bring a lot line moving to the planning board, it'd be great to see the original one on the app as well.
If you look at the exhibit Ally just had up.
Yeah, I know, I'm talking about what I got at my house, I only got the, I didn't get that one.
Okay, I will make sure that gets done, it's actually there, it's just, it's
I thought it might be that retaining wall, but if you could just exhibit it in general, it'd be great.
Okay. Levy, it's on the plan, it's on the sheet.
I don't see it.
Okay.
There's a tree right in the middle of the yard? That way and the retaining wall, yeah, well, we have to make it light, because that's the way you have to show it light, like the setback.
You have to do the regular one, okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions? Okay, seeing now, we'll open it to the public.
One question, Mr. Chairman?
Dave?
Yeah.
Yeah, please just identify yourself for the record. Okay, Dave?
Yeah, Dave Magno, the planning board engineer and planner. Glenn, so, I think you testified that the applicant currently owns both lots, so, I guess the shed that is currently on one lot, and will now be on the other lot, that's the reason why it's not moving, is because it's same ownership, that's correct?
Yeah, he's gonna keep it, that's why we showed the setbacks to it.
Okay, and the only other comment I had is, if the board has any landscaping recommendations, otherwise, I think Glenn made it pretty clear, you know, that he's addressing something else in the letter.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Would open up to the public, so Ally, or Mr. Jackson, have you gotten every correspondence and emails on this application?
No, I did not receive anything on this application.
Great, thank you, Ally, Mr. Jackson?
And likewise, I do not have any correspondence on this matter.
Okay, so, close it to the public, and we would ask for a motion on this application?
I'll move, make a motion.
Mr. Sable moves, who's second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, okay, roll call?
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzell?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on to number two.
Just a moment, my screen is not responding.
No problem.
All right, the next one is SP 23778, it's from 1626 Massachusetts Avenue, it's a change-of-use site plan exemption to convert a house to a school.
Okay, Dave, you there?
I'm gonna recuse myself.
Okay, let's make sure we have a quorum, Ally, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mr. Stern, Mr. Sable, Flansbrough, Isaacson.
Okay, so, Dave is recusing himself, okay, Mr. Dave Magno?
Yes.
Could you go through the report, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I don't know, Ally may wanna, I don't know if you could share the
Joseph Atlas
Yeah, I don't know if you could share a plan or not, Ally, anyhow, the plan, this is for a change-of-use for a building, and the plan correctly lists the waivers that are required in the notes on the, in the right here, and they involve design waivers from providing curb and sidewalk along Massachusetts Avenue, which happens to be a county highway, from providing onsite curbing, there's a driveway and onsite parking, providing, asking for a design waiver for providing bus drop-off and pickup area, also requesting waiver for providing a shade tree and utility easement, as well as from providing trees within that easement, and providing landscaping on the property. And I don't believe the, there's no variances being requested, although there's gonna have to be some testimony to clarify that that's in fact the case, and some testimony on the future use of the school building as outlined on page three of our report.
Thank you, Dave, Ally, who's the attorney on this application?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Adam Pfeffer, attorney of the
Hi, hi, Adam, how are you?
Very good. As indicated, this is a change-of-use application for an existing building into a school, I have Brian Flannery here to address the technical items, I think Brian's testimony should be fairly quick and could address all of Terry and Dave's. John, if you can, at this time, Mr. Flannery?
Do you swear a firm testimony before this court, be the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner, this is a 4.9 acre parcel on Massachusetts Avenue, the property to the south of us is a school that was approved by this board early last year, and on the north and the west side of us is the common open space of the fairways development, there's an existing house sitting in the middle of the site, and the request is to change the use of that from residence to a school, both permitted uses, it will have three classrooms and three offices requiring six parking spaces. Looking at Dave's report, with respect to the waivers, the request for the waivers is because this is a minor change in an existing developed site, the one item that I'd like to indicate is that the property has frontage on Massachusetts Avenue, we're asking to not do traditional curb and sidewalk in the right of way at this point, because I think everybody that looks at this understands that we're not gonna leave just this small building on a five-acre site for a long time in Lakewood, it's not consistent with the development in Lakewood. So what we would propose is that we would do, as has been done in the past, an asphalt sidewalk across the entire frontage, so that would be 500 feet of Massachusetts Avenue, where there will now be a sidewalk to provide for pedestrian access. Additionally, there were questions related to the adequacy of the parking, and again, has been done on other applications, we would be agreeable to adding an additional parking space, and the children, it's high school boys, that come are coming by vans which are run by the school, and the board has heard this testimony in the past, and we would provide two loading spaces for those vans in addition, so that everybody can be comfortable, that there's adequate circulation, adequate parking, and there's no need for people to park on the grass, or anything of that nature. One of the comments in the report with respect to the
Brian, could you show us the circulation plans, how the vans would come off, drop off the kids?
Well, yes, the entrance would be off Massachusetts Avenue in the existing driveway, and then there's a circular driveway where the vans would come around, the intent initially was that they would stop behind the parking spaces and unload the students. What we're proposing is that to the east of the existing parking spaces, we can add an additional parking space and a couple of unloading spots for the vans, so that there's plenty of room for loading and unloading students and vehicles to park, it's a five-acre site, we have plenty of room to add everything that the board feels the applicant wants this site to function well, until such time as it comes in and is developed with, further developed. We would also, because I know the comment will come up, we would provide sidewalk connecting the asphalt sidewalk out at Massachusetts up to the site, so that there's proper pedestrian access from Massachusetts Avenue, we certainly don't expect any children walking there, but anybody that's there that needs to come up to the site would not have to walk in the driveway, they'd be able to walk on a asphalt sidewalk that would be provided to provide the access.
Thank you, Brian.
Looking at the review letter, on page three, under zoning, it indicates admitted use. The item two was with respect to parking, my testimony is that six parking spaces are adequate, we're proposing so that everybody's comfortable to have seven parking spaces and two bus unloading spaces that would be in compliance with all applicable engineering standards, and reviewed and approved by the board engineer as part of resolution compliance. The design waivers for the shade tree and utility easements, we would add a shade tree and utility easement along the frontage of the property, so that design waiver would no longer be needed. With respect to the landscaping and street trees, it's an existing property, I drive by it, I used to, when I go to work, I would go by it every day, now I don't go to work every day, but it fits in very well. At this point, I don't think it would be wise to do any more trees at this time because when the further development of the site comes, it could be coordinated with the future improvements. But we would add the shade tree and utility easement, so that would no longer be needed. And again, the fourth comment on the providing curb and sidewalk, we're requesting the waiver for the curb and the sidewalk in the right of way, and we would, in lieu of that, provide along our property an asphalt sidewalk that would provide the pedestrian access at the time of future development. I'm sure that is not gonna be where we would want it, and it would need to be removed, but this would provide the school an opportunity to start. We're anticipating for this school year coming, we would have 45 students, and by next year we'd have 60 students. And the school will, in the meantime, do some engineering studies and determine what the next step is beyond that.
Brian, what's with garbage?
The garbage would be in rollout containers that would be rolled out to Massachusetts Avenue unless DPW wants something else. We will do whatever DPW wants.
It's a long way.
A dumpster on the site, but I.
It's a long way to roll it out.
It's good exercise for high school boys.
Okay.
And if DPW wants something different, again, it's almost a five acre site, we have plenty of room for that with respect to the buffers.
Could a truck make it around that circle?
Yes, yes. And again, during resolution compliance, whatever the determination of DPW is, the applicant will prove to the board engineer that the circulation works. And when you have a five acre site, it's easy to make things work. I wanted to point out that the plan does show the existing tree line, and anybody that's been through here sees that the front is cleared, the back near the open space for the fairways is wooded to an extent. The property to the north of us is their stormwater basin which comes out the Massachusetts Avenue, but the tree line in the back, we're not proposing to touch. This is one where we don't need any buffer relief because we have plenty of room on the property to respect the buffers. The building itself is 193 feet from the property line. The only disturbance we're proposing is a new septic field which would be 100 feet from the property line. And then the fairways open space is 30 feet wide. So we're, the only disturbance we're gonna have is gonna be 130 feet from anybody in the fairways.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I just, to hit the items in the report, it's a very short report. Again, we're anticipating 45 students this year, 60 next year, and they would be brought to the school in three vans. Obviously, occasionally, there would be a parent that would drop them off, but that's an occasional thing rather than a general thing. Item two with respect to the parking, you've indicated we would provide more than is required by ordinance. Item three, we would widen the driveway to the extent necessary if upon resolution compliance it's determined that more widening is needed. Item four will provide the wheel stops that are requested. Item six, the HVAC equipment will be screened. We, again, five acres, it's easy to screen that. The shade tree and utility easement, we would add in number nine. Number 10, there's no site triangle easement shown, but we would, part of resolution compliance, show that we have adequate site distance in accordance with the ASHTO standards. With respect to landscaping, we feel what's there is adequate. We could certainly provide a landscape plan as part of resolution compliance for the board engineer to review with respect to the building itself, which would incorporate some of the existing, any proposed that the landscape architect feels were necessary. Also, address the lighting. Any of the lighting for the parking lot will be on timers. The only lighting that would be on after that would be some low level security lighting. Item 13, we would, the plans will be done by Sermont, and they would be signed and sealed plans with all the details needed for RVE to review it. We really don't have any variances that need an explanation for, you know, how this complies with the master plan. The section 18 dish 906 on buffering, it indicates a 20 foot wide buffer is required. And as the board can see, the closest place we are is 100 feet, so we far exceed that. The master plan of 2017 on the vision statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, which we feel this complies with. Additionally, it says provide sufficient educational, recreational, and community facilities to meet the future needs. This is providing the educational facility. Page 10 of the master plan under community facility strategies, it says continue to support the development of private schools in the township of Lakewood. So we feel this is an inherently beneficial use. We're respecting our neighbors at this point. When the school works on their plans to expand sometime in the future, they would certainly reach out to the neighbors and have a conversation so that everything can be done in a neighborly fashion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Brian. Any board members have any questions from Mr. Flannery?
Mr. Chairman, just before we, Brian is a housekeeping, I believe you had two exhibits. Can you just mark them A1 and A2 and just identify them for Mr. Jackson?
Well, I think A1 was the tax map that was submitted, sheet 94, and it just highlighted the subject property, the 4.9 acre property. A2 is the change of use site plan that was prepared by Sermont. Those were the exhibits.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do any board members have any questions from Mr. Flannery?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Bruce, how are you?
Good, thanks. First, just a threshold question, why are we the planning board overseeing a change of use, just from my education, if somebody could answer?
I'd be happy.
I have a little bit of a personal perspective.
Probably 10 years ago, the ordinance said you can, 13 years ago, the ordinance said you can change from one permitted use to the other. There were some schools that abused that and did things that weren't very neighborly. And then there were repercussions. And at that point, the governing body said, if you're gonna change from a residential use to a school, you should at least notify the neighbors so everybody can see what's going on, and there's no unpleasant surprises. So that's why we're here this evening.
But why wouldn't still go to the zoning board versus the planning board?
Well, the zoning board be limited criteria, they do, they do. If you wanted a setback variance on a individual residential lot, you would go to them. If you added D variance, you need to go to them. Other than that, it's planning board jurisdiction.
Got it.
Mr. Stern, part of the reason for this review as well is to scrutinize it so that the neighbors can review things, we can make sure that there aren't any variances or any overreaches or anything else. Also, it gives us the opportunity to take comments into account. Sometimes we can satisfy neighbors with increased buffering or increased parking or increased setbacks or fence or, you know, many of the things that we often put on there. So the thought process was bring it in for review, let it get vetted in public, although it's conforming and it's permitted, it's still beneficial to air it all out in public rather than it just be approved administratively.
Thank you.
Brian, two quick.
There's a lot of feedback, huh? No?
I don't know from whom. Brian, two quick questions. So what about, I don't know if it's within our purview, but you talked about recreation before, you're gonna have 60 teenage boys. Where are they gonna burn off all their energy during breaks?
You mustn't have been past the site because it's an open grass area. The plan indicates in the upper.
Yeah, you have a play area in the rear.
Open space play area, and that's probably close to an acre that they have to play in.
Okay, so there's gonna be no basketball courts or anything like that, just grass to run around in?
Yes.
Okay. So then the other question is, you know, this is high school boys, so I guess I'm not so concerned, but you have a huge retention basin to the north, I believe, and there's no fence. So if this school were to decide to sell this campus to a K through eight school and move somewhere else, would that be of concern that we have this huge retention basing and no fencing on that northernly border?
What my, my professional opinion on that is that there's no fence along the front of the property, and there's typically not. And Massachusetts Avenue is a major collector road. I think no matter what school you had in there, if the school was not responsible for the children in making sure they don't just go wandering around, the risk of them getting hit by a car on Massachusetts Avenue dwarfs the risk of walking to the adjacent senior communities' stormwater retention facility.
Let me, Brian, you've made this argument before, like, okay, this is bad, but this one's worse, and therefore that seems to justify it. But okay, I guess the real question is, I'm not worried about high school boys running into Massachusetts, I'm not worried about high school boys falling into a retention basin and drowning. What I'm asking is if this school is sold, right? Schools get sold all the time. So this school gets a big donor, they build a brand new building on Biden Street somewhere, and they sell this campus to an elementary school.
We'd be happy to have a condition, we'd be happy to have a condition in the resolution if the board acts favorably, that if the school is sold to an elementary school, they need to either install a fence or come back to this board.
Let's just come back to this board, how about that?
Okay, they have to come back regardless if they're building any building.
No, even the existing one, Yekiel, if they sell this building to an elementary school, this is not safe for children.
Okay.
So high schools, I'm okay.
Mr. Jackson?
Wait, I'm not okay.
Mr. Jackson, can we, can we approve this change of use only for a high school?
Yes, because what we'll put in the resolution is the recital that says the board reviewed this matter and approved it on the basis of the ages of the children being, you know, later teenage years, 16, et cetera. The site is not necessarily suited for younger children due to some things like retention basin is proximity to the highway, therefore the approval is limited to that. And based on those facts, if the school is sold and it's a younger group of children, this approval will not be valid, and the board must, and the applicant must come back to the board to review for safety conditions.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Jackson.
Certainly put that in there, especially since the applicant's.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions from any professional? Seeing none, I would open it to the public. Oh, yeah, was that Dave?
No, it's Chaim Sable.
Chaim, I'm sorry. Chaim, you go ahead, go ahead, please.
One of the comments was from the fire department, they were not happy about having a minimum 20 foot width pathway, they say it's not enough. Brian, can you address that, and what are we gonna fix that? How are we gonna fix that?
My opinion is the 20 foot is sufficient. If the board feels we need 24 feet, we'll make it 24 feet. We have five acres, so four extra feet. It's just more impervious area.
Does the fire department have any recommendation, how wide they need for the trucks to turn around? Or Brian, do you? Thank you, Allie.
Not typically, the fire department doesn't need to turn around, and if a fire department is coming, it's because there's a fire, and they're gonna pull to where they can fight the fire, you know, not drive around the circle. My professional opinion, and the board has an attorney, you could ask his opinion, is that what's proposed would accommodate emergency vehicles. But again, it's a five acre site. If it needs to be bigger to accommodate the emergency vehicles, we would listen to the guidance of the board's engineer.
Okay, I see Allie brought up the law that they want the width should be minimum 25 feet. The required inside turning radius for a fire apparatus access road shall be me 25 feet. Are you okay with that?
We would comply with that, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave Magno, Mr. Chairman, yeah, one of the things that you could put in a resolution is that a circulation plan can be submitted for review, resolution compliance. This way, we can check the turning radiuses and, you know, see that the emergency vehicle will be able to pass through the site.
Okay, thank you. Brian, did you read through the whole thing, the 503.2 specifications?
I did not, no.
I mean, it's up on the screen.
Yeah, but we will comply with all the regulations.
Okay, thank you.
We have five acres, so we can comply, and that'll be a condition of approval, as Dave indicated, we'll submit a circulation plan that complies with the applicable regulations.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have another question, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, Mr. Sable.
First of all, thank you, Brian, for having on the mind with that pathway from the road to the building. Where is that gonna be? It's not on the plan. Where are you planning to put that?
It's not on the plan, but when I reviewed it, I could see that it would be something that the board would want and makes sense, and I mentioned it to the applicant, and the applicant was good with it. My feeling is that the pathway should come up the south side of the driveway and then connect to the sidewalk for the building.
So I guess on top of widening that roadway for the fire apparatus, we're gonna make space for a sidewalk as well, asphalt.
The access coming in, I don't think was the indication from the fire department, but if we have to widen, well, it was the 25 foot radius, which doesn't apply to this. So if it needs to be widened, we'll widen it, and in addition, we'll add that four foot sidewalk.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, we had it on the previous application. What happens if and when they bring trailers? Will they have to come back? Do they have to add parking? How does that work?
I'm happy to give my opinion on that. The applicant, if he wants to do trailers, would go to the zoning officer. The zoning officer checks if there is sufficient parking and makes sure that the trailer placement doesn't violate any ordinance conditions. If the board would like two more parking spaces in case there's ever a trailer, we'd be happy to go from seven to nine.
Because Terry, not Terry, Dave, the review letter mentions that a lecture room questioning if that needs a parking, but you did mention seven parking spaces. Question, seven parking is including the ADA? Because seven teachers, seven staff, and hopefully nobody's handicapped, so we need seven regular parking.
Seven spaces, one of which is ADA compliant. And again, as I've indicated, on five acres, we can add as many parking spaces as seems reasonable. We're happy to add, we'll make it nine or 10.
Okay, I think we should count the lecture room as one and have two more parking spaces just in case they put two trailers on. We should have, if the board would agree with that, this recover itself for the parking.
The applicant is agreeable to nine parking spaces.
Okay.
As part of resolution compliance, we'll provide that plan.
Okay, any other questions for any board members? Seeing none, we'll open to the public. Mr. Jackson or Allie, do we have any correspondence?
We have a lot.
We have a lot, okay. So we're gonna make it all. Okay, who's gonna be reading it? Allie, Mr. Jackson? Allie, I don't hear you so clearly.
Allie, we can't hear you.
She's speaking? Oh, she's muted. Oh, no. Okay, you were muted. Allie? I don't hear you. I don't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Uh, not so clear. So, Mr. Jackson, would you really want to go through it? If Ally can't, we'll hear you.
And, you know, I, Ally, you'll put them up in order that they were received?
Excuse me?
Oh, now we hear you, Ally.
Now we hear you.
Okay, now you're clear. Okay, so.
Okay.
Okay, so now I think we should read it into the record.
All right, um, I have a number I'm going to go through in order. Hold on, I got to mute John. Um, this is from Lorraine Gallo. She may be with the HOA next door, but I don't recall, so I'm just going to read these just in the state. As I received a notice to owners on Saturday, July 18th, it referred to 1626 Massachusetts Ave LLC application to Lakewood Planning Board for change of use and site plan exemption approval. According to Lakewood Township Planning Board procedures, if the subject's application requires a public notice, the following information shall be submitted to the planning board office by Thursday prior to the public hearing. White certified mail receipts with the date of mailing stamped by the post office, mailing to the notice of public hearing, letter to property, property owners within 200 feet of the subject premises, utility companies, et cetera. The notice to owners was placed in my mailbox, not mailed. Seems to me that the procedure was not followed. In addition, the notice was received on a Saturday. The planning board meeting is to take place on Tuesday, July 21st. Any questions, comments are to be received a minimum of two days. That would be on Sunday, July 19th. Seems to me that there was not much time given for the public to respond, or if any would even be reading emails on a Sunday. I would like to know the legal amount of days a homeowner should be given advising them of nearby construction. Lastly, enough is enough. The planned site would be right next door to another school, which is already built. The additional school bus traffic will be outrageous. In addition, schools should be built near residential areas where there are school age children, not among adult communities. As I have seen in the past, that does not seem to penetrate or matter to the planning board. I urge you to deny the applicant's change of use and site plan exemption approval and perhaps find a different location. This is Lorraine Gallo of Foxwood Road. I did reply back to her that, that, um, she was not within 200 feet of this property and that's why she did not receive a legal notice in the mail. Um, she seems satisfied with that information and I told her that I would show her her comments.
Um, thank you. Next.
If I can, just as the attorney, like, can, uh, can you just confirm that I have sent all proofs? I submitted copies of them to your office and your receipt of everything that was requested?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
This email is from Judith Buckridge. She's the board of directors at Fairways at Lakewood. I believe she or someone else had wanted to join the meeting. I don't remember if they're here, so for now, I'm just going to read the comments. Members of the planning board, I am writing on behalf of the 1,142 residents of the Fairways community adjacent to the property at 1626 Massachusetts Ave. We are a 55 plus senior community with single level residential homes. There are also two other senior communities opposite this address and adjacent to it on the other side. We ask you rethink the use of this land and not grant permission or any variances for a dormitory or another school to be built on this site, as one is still under construction and we haven't even seen the impact of that on our quiet community. The senior living in Lakewood is a generous base of income for the town by means of real estate taxes. There are no sidewalks on Massachusetts Avenue for children to walk and there are only one story residential homes in the area. Are these schoolchildren to be herded on this property like cattle? Will they be let out to wander the neighborhood without supervision? There is nothing for them to do in this area. Will there be fencing installed by the builders so they don't trespass onto the private properties nearby? Will this proposed building be another hideous three level building sticking out over the lovely one story landscaped homes nearby and incongruous with the development plan for this area by town boards of past several years? My suggestion is for the builder to find proper property near parks, stores, or cultural centers for the youth to develop a well-rounded education. I have noticed many buildings developed over the past few years in this area without forethought to the following. Will the drainage on the land for the proposed property surrounding this building have all the necessary catch bases and water retention systems? Will they be ample enough to take the water downpour from a storm of great magnitude? Will the builders guarantee not to let any water trespass onto neighboring properties or into the local streets, which will create additional personal and township expenses? Will there be a large buffer zone between, proposed between adjoining properties? Will there be bells, lighted basketball or sport usage courts or speaker systems planned for the proposed facility that can be two to three blocks away? How will this proposed facility disturb the existing landowners that bought here 10 to 20 years ago in Lakewood to enjoy peaceful living? The lower Fairways property values go, with additional buildings being erected nearby, the less the town gains from real estate taxes. If allowed by the planning board, the board becomes the town's worst enemy. Mr. Chairman, I ask that you call for a 30 to 60 day delay for the hearing to provide residents of the neighboring and affected communities proper time to review the application. This application constitutes a major variance of local land use. There is an element in municipal land use law that if an application is not considered in a specific number of days, it is presumed to be approved. I am asking you to waive the requirement during this most difficult pandemic and give the neighboring communities time to review the proposed plan. We would waive any requirement for additional notice to the community, community, and we implore the Lakewood Town Planning Board to agree to this delay and avoid a contentious application. Respectfully, Judith Buckridge, President of the Board at the Fairways.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, again, Adam Pfeffer, just to address that we, we are a permitted use. We have no variances. We're providing asphalt sidewalks. That, that's our request for the waiver. Um, and as far as, there was no speaker system. Um, so as far as all the items that were, that were addressed, uh, we're not asking for any variances on this application.
Mr. Pfeffer, you, you listened to the whole list that she listed out over there. And all I'm asking you to be a good neighbor, no noise. Uh, kitchen be playing on other sites, going offsite. Uh, if we need fencing, we'll have to put fencing in, but make sure that everything stays within the school property.
Mr. Stern, again, as Brian indicated, this is a five plus acre parcel.
So you have plenty of room to do anything.
A field for running around space. Uh, and, and I, I disagree that the, the school buildings being built in the area, the three story are ugly. I think there are actually some very nice buildings that have gone up.
And Mr. Pfeffer, again, even the play area that you're making, I think you said is 100 feet away from the fairways. Is that correct?
I believe it's 100 feet away from the, from the, uh, Brian, can you just confirm it's 100 feet away from the, the, uh?
Well, we're showing a, we're showing a play area in this area, which would be 100 feet away. The tree line, which, you know, uh, high school boys, they'll go toward the tree line. The tree line is at least 30 feet. Uh, and then there's an additional 30 feet of fairways trees. So there's 60 feet of trees uh, between any, uh, neighbor, uh, in the vicinity.
Brian, Brian, what is the substance of the play area? How is it different than the grass that's there today?
It, it's going to be the same. The high school boys, they can play on a grass. They throw balls around, they, uh, um.
Say it again, please.
Basically, it's designated.
It's not going to be anything more than grass.
And you designated that area.
But it's grass today. Right, right, right. It's grass today, right?
Correct.
And it's going to be grass tomorrow.
Yes, I think Bruce.
The only thing that makes it a play area is that you wrote it on the plans.
And also, Bruce, that they're not building.
I'm going to hear the answer to the question. No, you can't. I'm going to hear the answer to the question.
It makes it a area because there's a, an administration to the school and there's teachers in the school, there's faculty, and the faculty says, this is where they're going to play. Uh, so that's what makes it a play area.
And also, I think it would not be a bad idea to maybe make a basketball court or two or something that's.
From the neighbor that we heard, they don't want a basketball. Basketball courts make noise and the basketball courts encourage people to stay there later at night. So, uh, there, there's nothing in the ordinance requiring a basketball court. There's nothing in the ordinance requiring players. This is a conforming application for an existing building that has residential use to change to a school use on five acres of land.
And Mr. Stern, if, if you believe that recreational amenity is an important thing for the site plan, uh, that it will focus where the activity is going to occur, and, and you think that that's important, you can make that a condition of your approval. And, and if the applicant is dissatisfied with that, then they have their remedy. But right now it's before you. They're the ones that they're asking you to vote for an approval. And, uh, don't be afraid to put reasonable conditions on here like, like you're citing. Um, I'm not saying whether you should or whether you shouldn't. I'm just saying that if you want, I think that is within your authority, uh, within reason.
Okay, thank you. Let, let's continue with the correspondence, please. Ally?
Yes, am I muted? Hold on, I can't see.
We can hear you. I hear you a lot. I'm clear.
This is from Ariya Krans of Foxwood Road. He said, I live right in back of this project. I completely and totally support the opening of a yeshiva high school in back of my house at 1626 Math Ave. I would like to know if this project will include a dormitory and will there be Sabbath services at this location? I also want to make sure that no trees will be taken down for this project. The next public comment is a letter opening from the Fairways Homeowners Association. We did just hear from them. This is their formal letter. Um, I believe it's probably signed from, this is the same woman we heard from before, Judy Buckridge. She says, on behalf of the residents, I request you delay the public hearing for not more than 30 days for the following reasons. As you may recall, a school that was located on Massachusetts Avenue and that was adjacent to the Fairways community was relocated as a result of protracted difficulties that included, among other things, problems with improper disposal of waste, misconduct of unsupervised young persons and trespassing on the private property of Fairways residents. While the association does not project this conduct onto the current applicant, the history is a cause of concern for the residents, particularly those who are adjacent to the property. A 30 day delay in the hearing and any board decision will provide an opportunity for the association to request a meeting with the applicant and their engineering firm for the purpose of alleviating a number of concerns and addressing a number of questions. The same successful process was used when the application for the construction of the yeshiva on Cross Street was presented. The ultimate goal would be to achieve constructive communication and cooperation and develop a better understanding of the proposed project. The pandemic has made it exceptionally difficult to review the plans and application materials. This application documents and plans could be reviewed at the proposed meeting. The handwritten notes of the application review meeting indicate numerous submission waivers are required. While some of these may be technical in nature, there appear to be open questions about landscaping, location of a playground, location of a dumpster, school bus ingress and egress, and the number of parking spaces. All of these have the potential of adversely affecting the quality of life of the Fairways residents if thorough and careful consideration is not given to each of them. The association has no objection to waiving any additional requirement pertaining to notice of a rescheduled hearing. If necessary, by copy this letter, we request that the applicant waive any limitation on the timely consideration of the application in the interest of holding the proposed meeting. The association offers to host the meeting in its boardroom with a limited number of participants. On the behalf of the association, I look forward to your prompt response. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Hold on, yes, hold on, I was muted. Okay, Bruce, yes, please proceed.
So, Adam, Brian, um, would there be any problem of maybe you guys meeting with the homeowners? I don't know, on Monday? And then we put this on the agenda for next Tuesday or as quickly as possible? Have you met with them?
We have not met with them. If you read some of their concerns, they, they don't seem to be getting the fact that it's a permitted use, that the building is already there and that we're replacing a three bedroom house with, with a school. Uh, any delay, uh, in this process, which, uh, uh, results in the, the school not opening, uh, in the fall, uh, is a delay. And if we were building something that was impacting them, as I indicated, when, when there's future plans, we'd be happy to meet with them. But at, at this point, it would be a, an imposition on the school to wait. And there's nothing to talk about. We're not knocking down any of their trees. We're staying, uh, more than 100 feet away from their property line. Uh, the traffic is coming out to Massachusetts and it's an inherently beneficial use that's in accordance with the master plan.
Brian, there's substance in this process. And I don't have a problem with the, with the, with the substance here and I'll support it, but, um, it seems to me that would be a prudent idea to meet with the homeowners. You're not really changing the building that much, so we put it on for two weeks.
Bruce, if I can, this is Adam Pfeffer. So I'll be, I'll be the bad guy here. You know, the, the letter did come in. Um, I did have an opportunity to, to review the letter with our, with the, with the client. Um, I then, to that end, I emailed Ally and she did forward on an invitation to enter into this, into this meeting room, virtual room, to the, to the, um, association. A representative could have been here to address any of the questions. We sent them the invitation. This is not like they were the public and they could just watch it and then have to email additional questions. We feel we've addressed all the concerns, all the comments from both the, the technical hearing and the, the board's comments from this evening.
Yeah, Bruce, I, I, I agree. I think, well, going through all the correspondence, basically, I think Brian testified to all of it. There's, it's, it's only temporary and there's no variances over here. I think, uh, the benefit to help a school to be open for September, uh, I think every day is crucial.
Okay, so one thing, um, Mr. Hersl, though, um, Mr. Ally, when is the, uh, time period? I, I imagine we're well within the time period to, uh, make a decision on this.
Yes, it's October, November.
So, Mr. Stern, not to contradict Mr. Hersl, I understand the pressures, uh, that go with a school, but this will be here for a long time and I know you're trying to, uh, just have some dialogue with the neighbors and, and force that to a point. So the, the board does not have to decide this tonight, or we don't have to decide it until October. So, uh, you know.
What, what happens in October? What happens in October?
There's a time period within which the board has to act on an application.
Yeah, but, Mr. Jackson, they, they're, we, we're trying to help schools and the school has to be open by September.
Right. I just wanted to, to, you know, give that.
We're talking about a temporary.
I'd recommend that we read the rest of the comments. There are.
Yeah, please.
Let's enable this.
Let, let, let her finish with the rest of the comments.
Um, the next is, says, is from Zoltan Hurskowitz. Dear sirs, I would like you to be aware that I support the application for 1626 Massachusetts Avenue. I hope you approve this application. The next comment, I also received a few during the meeting. I will get to those next. The next comment is from Jeffrey Page at 40 Foxwood Road. He says, I am writing to you to express my support for the building of the yeshiva on the above mentioned property. This will enhance the value of the neighborhood. Thank you. I also received an email from Moshe Zinas. He, uh, he says it's a terrible time for the applicant to request a sidewalk waiver because the charter school right next door is right now in the process of installing their sidewalk. There is no way these guys can get a sidewalk waiver. Additionally, please ask them to address the fire district denial of their application. This application must widen their driveway to safely accommodate fire apparatus.
And they agreed to it.
Yes, and there's one more from Slomo Stein. He says, the circular driveway currently has lots of very low hanging trees over it, making it a scary drive for vans to drive through it. Will the applicant clear up some of the trees? That is the extent of the emails I received on this application. I would recommend that we close it to the public so that.
Let me just ask Mr. Jackson if he received anything. If there's anything else?
I, I have the same feed as Ms. Morris and I checked and, and we did get some ones and she, Ally just went through them. So no, there's no more aside from.
So everything was on the record. So I will officially close it to the public. And I would, uh, ask for a motion or to prove it or to push it off. I mean, let's, uh.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
I'm not going to stand against the whole board if everybody else feels differently. But to get a letter, a group that represents a thousand people and they want to meet, and even if we don't change a thing, them being heard, I think, is important. For their voice to be heard. Um, I imagine if we had a public meeting right now, there'd probably be a lot of people in the room. But they're not. So I would request that the applicant meet with the homeowners association as quickly as possible. And, uh, we'll put this on the agenda and.
Is that your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second on that motion?
Bruce, can we compromise and maybe, uh, allow them to do the change, but no additional trailers or such until we, uh, until we, they come back in front of the board or they have a meeting?
Okay.
I have no problem with the substance of this application. I, I'm in favor of it. It's a matter of, and these people are asking to sit down and talk. I think they should sit down and talk.
Apologize, I'm sorry to interrupt. I do, I have three more emails in my folder I had not. Apologize, I'm sorry to interrupt. I have three more emails in my folder I had not scrolled up to see that I should share at this point.
Okay, one second, please. We'll go through it in a second. Mr. Stern, I think they were noticed 10 days before. There was ample time for them to reach out if they wanted and who the attorney was if they wanted to meet. To bring it up now.
So, you never got this letter? Do they ever reach out to you or Brian?
Ally forwarded me the letter yesterday. By the time I saw it, reviewed everything, today we had a conversation. I did have an opportunity. I did reach out. I emailed back the, I'm sorry, I don't recall the woman's name on the email. I emailed her directly, and I asked, and CC'd Ally, and asked her to please provide her the invitation for this meeting so she could be here right now and make her comments on the record, as opposed, and had an opportunity to cross-examine them versus having just statements that are coming in. We're not trying to be bad neighbors, as was indicated, as was asked to make sure we're good neighbors. We're not really changing anything from the site. I've been doing this a few years.
You're changing the use. You're changing the use in the substance.
To a permitted use.
I said I'm for the application. I said this is not an issue of substance. This is an issue of being a good neighbor.
Okay. Let's, I'm going to open up back to the public. Let's hear from Ally. The other three, let's see before I'll ask for a motion again.
All right, let me share my screen again.
Okay. So it's open back to the public.
I did have these emails saved. I just, I wasn't scrolling up in the folder to see them. This is from Haya Esther Einhorn. She says, "As someone who lives close by," she's on Foxwood Road, "I hope you will approve this project. Thank you." This is from Abraham Hollander. He says, "I hereby would like to state that I have no issues with this proposed project." And then there's one more from Anshiel Davis on Sandhurst Road in the Fairways. She says, "I heard about the yeshiva possibly coming."
Ally, I don't hear you now.
Massachusetts. "I am totally for it. I believe that it will be an asset for the neighborhood."
Ally, you were fading.
Can you hear me?
Now, yes. Go back through. You were fading out on this one. We're reading it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, it says, "Anshiel Davis. He lives on Sandhurst Road in the Fairways. He says, 'I heard about the yeshiva possibly coming, and I am totally for it, and I believe it will be an asset for the neighborhood and community. Please move forward with this great idea.'" Those are the last three I had from the public.
Okay, thank you, Ally. So I'm closing it now to the public. And Adam, would you agree to what this Sable says? That it's just a temporary change of use and will not add any trailers before you come back to the board? So we're not.
Just so I understand, there was a motion, as far as then, there was no second, correct? Did that motion die, and we now have, is that?
We didn't have a second, and Mr. Sable asked you a question. You would agree to that. You would make that motion.
So I just got clarification.
Mr. Sable, are you there?
Mr. Sable, yeah, I'm just trying to compromise with Minister Stern and the applicant's attorney.
What we had is we had a motion, and Mr. Sable is asking if Mr. Stern would consider modifying that motion to include no trailers until after you meet and you come back to the board. That you could just do the construction.
So, Hi, so you're asking me to modify my motion. The substance of what I'm asking is they should meet with the neighbors. Are you?
Okay, Mr. Stern, I understand from, they will meet the neighbors. If we approve them tonight, it's just for the existing building. No trailer is nothing. Anything else? They have to meet the neighbors and come back.
And come back to us?
Yes.
I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, so, Mr. Sable, would you like to make a motion, Mr. Stern?
Mr. Sable, before you complete your motion, I would like you to include curb and sidewalk and no waiver for laptop.
Through the chair, through the chair. I have no idea what the motion is. We have exactly what we want to do here. Somebody please make a.
You're drinking margaritas at your beach house, that's why.
Somebody has to make a clear motion.
Okay. Hold on, you know, Mr. Flansbrough.
Excuse me, let's make a motion, and we can't have other people. Let's do a compromise motion. Make a motion. And let's, because I have no idea what's going on anymore.
Okay.
Chairman, I can clarify. I believe I can clarify. We're going to go, we're going to do a mega motion to approve the application with no additional trailers until they come back in front of the board. That's going to be number one. Number two, as Mr. Isaacson requested, we're going to put a, I guess he wants cement sidewalk and normal curb on Massachusetts. We had, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, we had a discussion about a recreational area. I'm not sure how Bruce, given the opportunity.
Time lead that.
Okay, so I'm ignoring that. The applicant planner agreed to do a nine parking spot just for the building itself without the trailers. And they would add a pathway from the building to Massachusetts. I guess it's either asphalt or concrete, but we're doing concrete on Massachusetts. I'm going to leave that up to whoever the board wants to back me up.
I think if it's interior, we could say if it's only temporary, we should allow them to do asphalt if you would agree.
I'm okay with that, but I would like to see this on plan.
Are we talking about asphalt from the street to the building, or are we talking about asphalt on the street, as opposed to regular concrete curb and sidewalk?
Mr. Isaacson requested, and he suggested that we should do concrete and curb on Massachusetts, and I'm agreeing that we should do asphalt from the road till the building.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification.
Do we have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, was that Justin, that was you, right?
Chairman, I'd just like to add some information so the board knows what they're voting on. If you require the concrete curb and sidewalk, the school will not be opening in September because we need county approval for that, and that will not occur before September.
Brian, if we put concrete and curbs on your property?
You can't put the curb on our property because the curb has to be on the road. We could do concrete on our property, concrete sidewalk, not curb. We would need county approval. Never going to happen in time to open in September.
Mr. Sable, will you agree to have concrete sidewalks and no curbs until?
I would suggest we should ask Mr. Isaacson, what do you think is best?
Mr. Who?
Mr. Isaacson. It was his recommendation. I would agree to give it.
Mr. Isaacson, oh, you do.
Yeah, Brian, explain to me, if you put in an application for curb, and the county doesn't approve it, you can't get a change of use?
In order to get approval to put curb and sidewalk along Massachusetts Avenue, we have to submit an application to the county engineer. They're going to want profiles of the road 500 feet in each direction. They're going to review it several times, and then they're going to tell us, move this up, move that down, put drainage here, do the other stuff. They don't work quickly. They don't care if the kids are in this school in September. They have their way of doing things, and their way of doing things doesn't change in Lakewood. They do in the whole county. This is the way they do it. There's no hurry, there's no urgency. So the school will not be opening this year.
I think what we should do is in order for them to get a CO, let them put an asphalt, you can put asphalt in the front, and they'll apply for the curb and sidewalk.
Agree that we will not put any trailers in until there's curb and sidewalk?
That was not, that was not my motion. My motion was, and based on Mr. Stern's recommendation, there's no trailers until they meet with the clients, with the neighbors, and come back to us. That was not what I intended.
Oh, I was offering a compromise with respect to the concrete curb in the right of way so that the school can open in September.
This is my motion based on the, this was my motion based on Mr. Isaacson and Mr. Stern's request. If I don't have a second, I'll retract my.
Okay, so, Mr. Isaacson.
Through the chair.
Yes, yeah, Justin, please.
Because I second the motion. I wholeheartedly agree that there should be curb and sidewalk along Massachusetts, concrete curb and sidewalk. We shouldn't start making exemptions. But in order for the school to open up in September, I would be amenable to them doing something temporary along Massachusetts in the form of asphalt. They're going to bond for the curb and sidewalk anyway. So, or alternatively, let them apply for the curb and sidewalk. I don't know if they can get a CO to move in temporarily.
They could get a temporary CO.
No, no, your first idea was the best, Justin. Let them get open, put some asphalt on, and, you know, if they want to do anything more, we have to make sure they get it done.
Yeah, I mean, they're going to bond for the curb and sidewalk, so let's do it that way.
Okay, Brian, we want them open in September, and we're not trying to throw roadblocks, but I think what you're hearing is we want to get some sidewalks, and we'd like you to meet with the neighbors. That's it. Give me your approval now.
Okay. Okay, let's go back to Mr. Sable. Could you, are you agreeing with the way Justin made the motion?
Yes, and just to clarify, I'm going to start over again, okay?
Okay, please.
Yeah, so regarding sidewalk, we board members agreed to do asphalt for now, bond for concrete and curb, and.
And apply to the, submit the application to the county.
Right, submit proof to, I guess, the board engineer or somebody that we have that submitted. And asphalt to the building. They're going to, no trailers whatsoever until they meet with the.
Neighbors.
With the neighbors and come back to us. A nine parking spot and no buses, high school only. That was one of the things that we suggested. Has to be high school only, no elementary school. One of the neighbors requested clearing the trees. If we can do that, that'll be nice.
No, he said no clearing the trees, I think.
No, on top of the driveway.
Yeah, keep it simple, keep it simple. Okay, do we have a second? Okay, thanks, Hi. Do we have a second on it?
I'll second it. I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Flansbrough, seconds. Roll call, please.
Hold on, I'm writing down his last comment, which was clear the trees that are overhanging on the driveway. That was a comment from the public. Can you hear me?
Ally, it's chairman. We forgot to mention that the fire department's recommendation of making it wider. We have to add that.
Brian agreed to that. That's part of the record. Okay, thank you for bringing it up. And Justin, you second that too, right?
I second.
Okay, so when you're finished, Ally, let's go to the roll call, please.
Mr. Flansbrough seconded. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Hersl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hersl, I just want to clarify something with the board, and I'll direct this to Mr. Sable. I presume, and I understood, that when you said they have to come back before trailers, that's not a new application. That's merely a matter of meeting with the neighbors, giving them that courtesy, having this back on the agenda, and then we can, you know, vote on the addition of the trailers at that time. So that's not a whole new process or a later application. It's kind of like a continuation of a component of this application. Is that what you envisioned?
I certainly would like to see that happen sooner than later. Meet with them as soon as possible, and then have them, and send a letter back and let us know how the meeting went.
Okay, I agree with that too. We're trying to help a school, but also would like to be a good neighbor. I appreciate what Mr. Stern said.
I guess they come back in correspondence?
Yeah, yeah.
Since we're virtual, I think it would be better to, well, it could be on correspondence. I think we should announce it and carry it for consideration of the trailers on the date to be determined tonight. And the applicant can ask for a further adjournment if they're not able to set up a meeting with them by then.
Mr. Jackson, I just clarify, we don't even have a request for trailers. I believe that Brian's testimony was, in the event we go to get, something we want to expand, I think someone was saying you have five acres. We have no.
I misunderstood that. Okay, so you're not asking for trailers at this time?
Not at all. The question I believe was asked was what would happen if we wanted to get trailers? And Brian indicated we'd have to get a certificate. We'd have to show we comply with the parking, and Brian then offered, I'll give you the parking.
Okay, okay. Okay, I got you. I thought that was, okay, so until they, so that would then be on correspondence, and it would just be an administrative thing.
So we'll see in the year or two when the school grows. I mean, right now, we're not, there's no request for it.
Okay.
And Mr. Pfeffer, the reason we did this is because, as is, the building is done. The building is standing. The yeshiva can be there in two months. We want it to open, but we don't want it to make, upset the neighbors by having additional trailers and additional classrooms there. That's the only reason why we added it.
We're not arguing, we're not texting. I just wanted to clarify because John was going to notice it for another meeting. I'm just saying, we don't even. That's all.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go further. Onto number three.
Yes, our next application, I'm sharing my screen, sorry, is SP 2354 made by RBM Properties. It's a major site plan for a building addition at 1985 Rutgers University Boulevard.
Okay, Dave, would you like to go through the report, please?
Sure. This is a major site plan along Rutgers Boulevard. It's for a building addition on the northeast side of a large warehouse. Well, mostly warehouse building. And they're they're looking to add 44,000 square feet of building area. It needs a number of submission waivers, and it's the first thing. I'm not sure who's here representing the applicant at this time, but.
Erywael Lopez and Bill Stevens is here as well.
Ah, thank you. First question on the submission waivers is, where do we stand with a letter of interpretation absence on the site?
I didn't catch the question. Letter of interpretation for what?
Letter of interpretation absence. On the southwest side of the site, there's a stream and wetlands, and I don't know if that affects your drainage or not at this point yet.
I'll let Bill Stevens answer that and other technical questions.
I'd be happy to. Good evening. John, would you like to swear me in first?
I would love to. As soon as I found my mute button, there we go. Mr. Stevens, you swear from testimony, you'll give before this board with the truth, the whole tier, then that's about the truth.
I do.
And you're offered as an.
Chairman, I'm back in.
We'll accept it.
It's reflective that Mr. Garfield has rejoined the meeting. Mr. Stevens, you're offered as an engineer and planner. Mr. Hersl, you recognize him based on his numerous appearances and that task.
And we're only thinking about regarding the waivers right now, not about the application, right?
Correct.
Okay, please proceed.
So, we reviewed the Remington Vernick Review Letter, and we went out and looked in the field. We don't believe there are any wetlands on the subject property, nor are we doing any work in that area of the site. We would, however, agree to get a presence absence from the DEP showing there are no wetlands on the property.
Okay, yeah, then, but that obviously would be a condition of approval. I think all your other submission waivers that are being requested are reasonable at this point in time, and our report lists the items which would have to be made conditions of approval afterwards.
Okay, so do we have a motion to go along with engineer's recommendation to grant them the waivers?
Hi, I'm saying we can motion tomorrow.
Okay, anybody seconded by Dave? All in favor of the grand waivers? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, Dave, on to, you want to continue the report, on to zoning?
Yes, on to zoning. No bulk variances have been requested. However, looking at the plans, it appears that they're going to need a variance for the number of off-street parking spaces. All this requires one space for 250, for every 250 square feet. And they wind up being, by our count, slightly deficient. They would need 280, 280 spaces for the entire site, and they only have 272, by our count. And then they need a couple, a few design waivers on a property as well. There's no sidewalk along Rutgers Boulevard, and none is proposed. They need a.
Are there any other sidewalks in the area? Dave, do you know?
Not on the adjacent properties. It's a little bit hit or miss out there. There may be some across, on some of the properties. Um, there may be some across, on some of the properties across the street, but it's, it's, it is sporadic. That I, that I can tell you from my memory.
And the way I see it, it's sporadic now and it's all gonna connect shortly.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not done.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the design waivers they need, uh, is a perimeter buffer, uh, 25 feet is required and they don't have that in all locations. And also, uh, um, uh, the time waiver for park, parking within 20 feet of the, uh, right of way.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney for this application?
Ruel Topaz.
Okay, Mr. Topaz, hello.
Good evening.
Yes. Okay, please proceed.
Okay, so as I say, for the most part, the, the issues here are technical and I'll let Mr. Stevens address the issues in the ways in the review.
Um, Mr. Stevenson has been sworn in already. So, Mr. Stevenson, to be there?
Yes.
Okay, please go through the rep, uh, report, please.
So I'd be happy to. We'll go over the points that need some discussion. One of the points in the Remington Vernick Review Letter under zoning talks about what are the uses in this building? So currently, right now, there are four users in the building. There's a company called Modular Closet. There's a company called Rubber Cycle. There's a company called NJPD Plumbing. And there's a company called MG Stone. So I, I don't know how familiar the board is with these companies, but the, the last one I mentioned, MG Stone, is of particular importance to this. They do granite countertops and, and gra- granite tabletops, giant pieces of stone. They want to have this addition, this 44,000 square foot addition we're proposing here, so they can store stone inside. So we're not looking to add additional users here. We're simply looking to add covered space for the tenant currently there now to be able to store his stone inside. Right now, he, he is storing overflow stone, uh, outside and I, I, from what I understand, not that I'm an expert in that business. It's just not good for the granite once it's polished to be outside.
Okay, it's more, more or less a warehouse.
Correct, that's exactly what it is. It's, it's a warehouse for storage space inside.
So there are no new tenants? So technically, you don't need any more parking from what's existing?
That would be, that would be correct. Uh, as Mr. Magno stated in his opening remarks, we, we are not asking for any variances. The proposal for this addition is conforming. And where we're building this addition is really in a paved area for the most part. So we're really not even adding a tremendous amount of additional impervious, although we are looking to reconfigure some of the parking areas to make them work better.
Are you adding any more parking from before?
We are, we are not adding parking spaces. We're keeping the parking spaces the same. However, there, there was a mistake on my drawings. Um, I had forgotten that the township had changed the office from 300 square feet to 250 square feet per parking space.
Okay.
So I went back through and looked at that and, and find that there are a couple areas in the pavement where we could actually go in and restripe the additional eight spaces we need without changing the layout of the plan. We could just restripe a few spaces, uh, really in that paved area adjacent to where the addition is going.
So your testimony is that you could be variance free with, uh, regarding the parking?
We will restripe on the current proposed parking limits to 280 spaces, yes.
And you would bring that by resolution compliance, you bring that up?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anything else on the report or the, you agree with everything else on the remainder report?
Other than that, I think we can address all the comments in the Remington Review Letter.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for any board members?
I have a quick question. In the back.
Mr. Sable.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, in the back with the loading zone is right now, uh, I'm just looking on Google Maps. It shows a, a, a trailer with this, uh, the container and the, and the front piece. You, you, you're proposing to put over there a bunch of parking spots, nine by 18. You think that's possible?
You, you mean at the backside of the, of the loading area?
Okay, so I see the cars parked already there by that U.
Correct, so, so right now, there is parking there. What we are proposing to do is to move the parking back about 15 or 18 feet, so there'll be more room in there to maneuver trailers.
And you.
We're not changing the parking, we're just making the, the loading area actually larger.
And you think it'll be enough for two-way traffic after the trailers are parked in?
Yeah, it, it works now. We're not proposing to change the configuration, although actually, we're gonna make it better because we're gonna have the driveway. Instead of going, going out the way it goes now to Rutgers, it's gonna go back out through the adjoining property out to Rutgers. So it'll be an easier movement for trucks to make.
Okay.
I mean, you are taking away nine feet because you're adding 61 spaces over there. On the, one of the south, southern side, behind the existing building or the other corner. You added 61 spaces where currently there isn't. So you're taking away nine feet from the width of that drive through.
So, so tho- those spaces technically are there. We took that information from the original surveys and site plans for this building. So we're, we're not changing that. It's, it's not a proposal. Actually, the only thing we are doing is making it better by widening it about 15 feet.
Okay.
And you're gonna put stripes, you're gonna put a striping throughout or currently there isn't any stripes? Any parking slots?
Yes, we are, we are going to stripe the spaces, restripe them. It does need to be done.
Mr. Sable, are you staying around?
Yes.
I heard that call coming. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Any other board members have any other questions for any professionals?
Mr. Chairman, we have to address the sidewalk, Mr. Chairman. Uh, you, you, you brought her up.
I, I don't know what, the board will make a motion on that. I mean, what's your opinion, Mr. Sable?
Entire Rutgers University Boulevard? That's the question? And, well, yeah, and Rutgers University? That's a lot.
Mr. Stevens, how wide length of, uh, of curbing would that be? Curving sidewalk?
The entire, the entire frontage of this property is significant.
Is there any schools on that, that strip of land? That's a small street on Rutgers Boulevard now? I don't.
I'm just estimating because there's, there's a bunch of courses to add up, but it, it's closing 2,000 feet.
Okay, Mr. Stevenson, what, uh, what are the, are there any surrounding buildings? What's adjacent to this building? Are there any pedestrian traffic, walking?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, it's, uh, Mr. Isaacson. I know Oruy Spesjakov is on that block. I don't know if there's any other schools though.
Okay, the, if you, Mr. Isaacson, you know the area. What would you recommend regarding sidewalks?
I recommend.
It's a lot.
I re- I recommend we, we make every, every owner in Lakewood put sidewalk where there isn't.
Yeah, that's, that's 2,000 feet. That's a lot to ask for.
I, I understand, but, uh.
So that's what I'm asking you, is there any compromise that you feel which area is more important? Do you, do you know the area?
I, I know the area. I, I would, I would guess to say the side nearest to the school, which would be the, um, which would be the, uh, right side of the building if you're facing it. But, um, yeah, that side, but it's, it's, it's hard to, uh.
It's a tough call.
Yeah.
We, we've done in the past, we've compromised with asphalt in the, in industrial park. We did that in front of the Shiva down the block.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. I know the mayor told me it's also okay in the industrial park to go with asphalt. And if it does asphalt.
It's actually at the corner. It's actually at the corner of Rutgers and Swatmore. It's always, we just approved and we made it an asphalt.
And Mr. Sable, if they do asphalt on 2,000 feet, I think it will cost them less than, uh, a few hundred feet in, uh, concrete. Asphalt's much cheaper.
I think it's like $8.
I, I, I think the other one is, the other one, I think is about $50 a square foot.
Right.
I think there's a big difference. So you could do much more if we do asphalt. I, I think we should open up to the public if there's any public comments. Ally, do you have anything? Mr. Jackson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I don't think I have anything, but I will double check.
Chairman, while Ally's checking, just, just a note on the whole Rutgers.
You, you, I didn't hear you.
The, the entire Rutgers is curved.
Okay.
So we're really only discussing, uh, sidewalks.
Okay, thank you. It's good, that's a good point.
I have no public comments.
Okay, so I'm closing it to the public. And Mr. Jackson?
Can we confirm that? Can we confirm that everything has curved? Because that's gonna make a big difference.
Once.
So yes, this is Bill Stevens again. The, the entire frontage of the property has curbed. There are no sidewalks adjoining it or, or opposite it on, you know, any portion of Rutgers Boulevard. There is one piece of sidewalk which is in front of the Shiva, which is two buildings to the right if we were facing the building.
Mr. Stevenson, the Shiva has asphalt or concrete?
Um, the, the building that has sidewalk appears to me to be concrete. And there is only one building that it has and it's not adjacent to this one.
Okay.
It's just a lot for somebody to do who's trying to build a warehouse to keep a viable business in the industrial park here. I mean.
Right, so my, my, my question is if you have curbs and we just do for asphalt, uh, a sidewalk for asphalt going around the building? Which is much cheaper.
About $15,000.
I see the applicant here. I mean, you can unmute yourself, Mr. Gustadner, if you want to speak. You muted.
Oh, hold on.
He'd have to be sworn in as well.
Yeah, right. Uh, Mr. Jackson? Mr. Jackson, are you there?
Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony will give before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Raise your, yeah.
Do you affirm or swear that the testimony will give before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I affirm.
Okay, thank you. Please, would you like to say something, Mr. Gustadner?
Yeah, I, I believe there's one building on Rutgers that has sidewalk. And if, if all my neighbors would join, it would make sense. I, I don't mind doing pavement. Um, like you said, uh, doing asphalt, but, um, what's the point if, if nobody else in Rutgers is doing it?
I, I think eventually everybody's gonna do it. Anybody who's building over there's gonna have to be doing it.
The, the. Rutgers all built up.
Everything's built up, right?
But they're being converted one at a time, one, one, one warehouse at a time. There's two small warehouses between you and Oruy Spesjakov.
Mr. Chairman, I, I.
Mr. Flansbaum, yeah.
I would be okay with asphalt. I mean, we, we, that's what we've been approving in the industrial park.
Okay, one at a time, please. Just one at a time, Mr. Flansbaum, you speak.
Thank you. I would be okay with that.
Yeah, I, I, Mr. Flansbaum, we had a few conversations with the mayor. And, and the mayor has also told us that he would like asphalt in industrial park.
Purely like industrial area, warehouse space. So the issue of having pedestrians need, uh.
What's going on there? We need the feedback.
To most of the schools. They don't have much places to walk to, take a can or where they are.
I, I, I think, I, we're repeating what we said before.
So each place is stuff they want. So they. Yeah, transportation.
Okay.
Doing from school, they spend their days.
Hold on one.
Um, have a good. Asphalt facility, so. Actually, I, I think it might be.
You're breaking our.
More appropriate.
Mr. Topaz, are you speaking now?
I, I think Mr. Topaz was trying to speak. But I don't think anybody understood.
Okay, just one second. Okay, now we're back to normal. Mr. Topaz, were you trying to say something? Okay, uh, we don't hear him.
Mr. Topaz, could you nod or shake your head? Were you trying to say something? I don't know if he hears me.
Mr. Topaz, you're going to have to dial in, I think, on your cell phone. Do we have the number? Can you hear me? Put thumbs up if you can hear me. It appears he can't hear us.
Ally, do you have his number that we can call him? Or Mr. Jackson, could somebody call him before we take a motion? Mr. Gustadner, do you have his number?
Yes, yes, I do.
Okay.
Looking it up, hold on one second.
Okay, you're the applicant, you could speak instead. Just make sure your attorney is, is okay with everything.
Yeah, so his number is, uh.
No, you could call him. I, I don't need his number, I'm not calling.
Okay, I'll, I'll text him to call in. What number should he call?
Ally.
It's on the meeting invite I sent him.
You sent him a text?
Okay, thank you, Ally.
No, it's, it's, no, no, it's on the email with the meeting link, the same one he used to join the meeting.
I'm not sure what he was trying to say, so I just text him to call in.
Well, if you want to call him, I would like to ask for a motion.
Mr. Stevens, are you online?
Yes, I'm going to message Mr. Topaz the, uh, the number and the password. So, uh, let's see if that works.
Okay, Mr. Sable had a question for Mr. Stevens. So, Mr. Sable, please go.
I'm, I'm not, just for my own, uh, interest, do you, do you, you said you're changing the traffic flow one way or the, the other? I tried to figure that out on the circulation plan. I'm not able to, just, just to give it some clarification.
So, so right now, the parking that's in front of the building doesn't connect. There's parking on one end and there's parking on the other end. What we're proposing to do is to build a driveway through so that you'll be able to drive from one end of the site to the other, inside of the site in front of the building. So it's going to improve the circulation in the front. In the rear, we're going to take the truck access, which currently, right now, wraps around where the building addition is going to go. And we're going to put that onto the pavement on the adjoining fabric store, which you can also own. So the truck, the truck traffic and the car traffic for the site is going to be improved by the sample change.
Beautiful, thank you for that.
Well.
I think Mr. Topaz is trying to call in now.
Okay, ju- just, just, just one second, please. Hello?
Ruel Topaz.
Hello.
Join the meeting.
Hello.
Hello, Mr. Phil.
Yeah, Mr. Topaz, were you trying to say something before?
Yes, I was. I, I got done making a, a very fine speech and then, uh, I found out that, uh, nobody got to benefit. Now, I was just trying to.
You have to speak in English next time.
Okay. Uh, English, okay.
I don't know, it didn't sound like English to me.
They changed the rules on me, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, anyway, so I, I was just trying to add to this, this dialogue about the, uh, the sidewalk and, and the waiver that we've requested, which is, it seems to me that the appropriate time that the sidewalks would become, um, would, would make sense would be if these buildings are in the future going to be converted to schools. Otherwise, right now, they are, buildings that do not have, as a general rule, any pedestrian traffic going to and from them. They're industrial, uh, they're manufacturing, they're, uh, they're warehouse spaces. There are vehicles coming and going, but pedestrian traffic is very, very limited, particularly to and from these particular kind of buildings. And I, and I would just further point out, when it becomes schools, uh, and more of the buildings are converted to schools, it might become germane. But at the moment, with only one school there and only one property that has curb and sidewalk, it just doesn't seem to make a whole lot of sense. And it seems to be a very, very heavy burden to lay on this particular application. I would respectfully ask that you consider the waiver.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any board members have any other comments before I ask for a motion?
Yeah, this, this building that, that Mr. Gustadner owned, I don't think it's gonna become a, a school anytime soon. But the other two buildings in, in between them have the potential. It's small buildings, uh, they have the potential down the road and then it's never gonna be connected. We do understand the burden, therefore, we offer, we're suggesting asphalt, which is gonna cost maybe $15,000, uh, which is one five, not five zero. $15,000 based on $8 a square foot, so it's $16,000. There's already curb, uh, I think it's fair to ask, but I'm. There's already curb. I think it's fair to ask, but I'm only one of four, five, six.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, I would ask for a motion on this application.
I have one question.
Okay, Dave, please, please go ahead.
Yes, what is currently under where you want to put the warehouse? Is it grass or is it asphalt?
No, it's basically a paved parking lot.
Okay, now just wondering about the water flow off the building.
Einstein will make a motion to approve this with asphalt sidewalk throughout the property.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Good. Justin and Dave both second. Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Hudson.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the last thing on the agenda is number four. Good night, Mr. Stevens.
Ruel Topaz.
Good night.
This is application SP 2211A for Benos Melich of Lakewood. It's an amended major site plan for the school and gym.
Okay, Ally, I think it was a mistake on the agenda. You wrote office building. That's what we got, right?
Corrected that when Ms. Weinstein pointed that out for me.
Okay, so it's not for an office village?
No, it's not.
Okay, okay, Dave, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, what this application is for, this is an amended site plan uh, for a, an additional school building. Honestly, I believe it is a high school building behind the existing school. And also the addition of a gym building as well. The project has just a few submission waivers that are required. Traffic study, submission waiver is required and the applicant indicated that they are requesting the waiver because right now you just can't get accurate traffic counts, which is reasonable being the pandemic is going on. And then they have submission waivers for off-site features within 200 feet. And we're okay with that because the topography does go far enough off-site for the design. And the last one is for environmental impact statement. And the site is already partially developed, so we're okay with that submission waiver as well. So first thing to do is act on the submission waivers.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to go along with engineers' recommendations regarding the waivers.
So move, this is Justin.
Okay, Justin moves. We have a second.
Sir Isaacson, seconds.
Okay, and are we all in favor? I.
I.
Okay, I'll tend to report on the zoning, please.
Yes, for zoning, this is in the M1 industrial zone. And it is a permitted use, schools are permitted use. It needs a front yard set of back variance. And that, actually, this is, it's an existing condition and it's new variance in the sense that the M1 zone requirements have changed. Front yard setback is 109.67 feet, where 140 feet is now. And the. The new building in the back requires a new setback variance. It is set 10.69 feet for the rear line, where 30 feet is required. Um, side yard setback variance, 12.24 feet, whereas the minimum is 30 feet required. We need a combined side yard setback variance. The revised plans have a combined side yard setback of 27.58 feet, where 70 feet is required. Um, need for relief, 10 feet is required in this particular zone. And the improvements go within 10 feet of the property line. Uh, on the next item, we're going to need testimony on the bus loading and unloading. Current, the revised plans only give us one legitimate bus loading, unloading space. And I think the plans can be revised to provide more spaces, but we'll need testimony on to how many are actually needed. And then for signage, identification sign has not been shown. However, there are signs on the site, which we don't know if they already have permits. Um, if they're going to the zoning board, that's going to have to be addressed in testimony. Because we can't tell you right now whether there's any relief needed. And as far as design waivers, there's one design waiver. And that's for street trees along James Street. And as far as review comments, we'll need testimony on the, on the new building itself. The maximum number of staff for the site. I will be testimony confirming that there's no parking variance needed. Quite a few parking spaces proposed. We really don't know what the, what the existing building has, so we can't count the numbers. And right now, the front building that is operating is operating under temporary significant of occupancy. Um, the engineers and the professionals can address what the status is on getting that to be permitted. And I, I don't know if they have any renderings of the building to show you. If they do, they should provide that for you as an exhibit. And as far as landscaping, if the board has any landscaping recommendations, that should be discussed now as well. So those are the high points and open it up to the applicants for testimony.
Okay, who is the attorney for this applicant?
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
Weinstein, yeah.
Good evening, Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant Benos Melich of Lakewood. Um, just want to confirm for the board that this application is actually an amendment to a previously approved application, which called for building both a girls' elementary school and a high school in phases. So the first phase was building the elementary school, which is already built and in use, and that's the building that Dave was referring to before. The second phase, which was already approved, actually called for construction of the high school building. That plan was approved by this board in December of 2016. And it called for a two-story high school building. After they got the high school operational, it's actually operating out of the same building at the elementary school currently. So actually, both the elementary and the high school are currently operating on this site. What they discovered was that a two-story building is not going to be that functional for a high school. And their preference was to have all classes on the same floor. So we came back, we came back now with this design, which calls for a single-story building. The new plan also calls for a gym addition for the elementary school. So all of this is to be accomplished without requesting a parking variance. And with 145 parking spaces, our testimony we will present will certainly show you how the parking is sufficient. We'll also go through the bus staging, the bus loading and unloading as Dave answered. But F for, but just to reiterate, I just want the board to understand that this was a fully approved school for both buildings. And we're merely here tonight to change the two-story high school building to a single-story building, which does change the setback slightly, which we'll explain to you and outline in our testimony. And to add a gym to the existing elementary school building. But again, this site has really been fully operational to both the full elementary school and the full high school with all the school buses for many years now. If I can ask at this point for Glenn to be sworn?
Yeah, please. You're breaking up a little, Mrs. Weinstein. Okay, Glenn, are you there? And Mr. Jackson?
I don't see him, but please raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony you'll give before this?
He's here. Let me just make sure he's still here.
I hear him.
I see him, I see him. Yeah, move over here. He's there.
Okay. Do you swear from testimony you gave? You said yes, um, offered as an engineer and planner.
Okay, I'm accepting him.
As Mrs. Weinstein pointed out.
As an engineer, you have a good way getting good computers for everybody, because we don't hear all this crackling. No backup noise. It's very hard to hear, everybody. Okay, Glenn, please proceed.
Okay, um, we are modifying our original approval. Go from a two-story high school building in the back of the property to a single-story high school building. The number of classrooms has been reduced. The original plan had 25, we're reducing the number of classrooms to 26, I'm sorry, to 16. But to do that, um, we ended up with increasing the variances we need for the school. So it's, we have side yard, two side yard setbacks and a rear. Just kind of going around the school in a clockwise manner. Uh, the setback on the east side goes from 12.31 feet to 12.24 feet, which is a little less than an inch. The rear setback, which is up against the railroad tracks, that goes from 18.808 feet to 10.59. And the setback on the west side, which is where the arrow is right now, that goes from 1802 to 15.34. Uh, so that's, that's really the increase in the variances we need. Uh, the building itself goes from a two-story building, which was going to have 53,319 square feet. Uh, now it's going to be 41,616, all on one floor. Variances. As far as parking, counting the existing building and the new school, the new school gets counted under the ordinance at three spaces per classroom and one space for office and tutor room. We come up with required of 176. And we originally had 206, now have 207. We've actually increased one parking space and we have an excess of 30. And that's in addition to that the ordinance now requires three for every classroom and one for every office. So there's a lot of overlap in the parking requirements. Uh, you normally only have one teacher per classroom. But the ordinance in the M1 now wants three spaces for every classroom. That gives you parking for, you know, tutors or aides, for parents to come. So what we do, we do comply. Other than that, all of the.
Yeah, Mr. Lyons, is there any change to the circulation on the site plan?
None.
Okay, garbage is the same as before?
Garbage is all the same, circulation's the same.
Are you increasing any students? Or it's mainly for a gym?
Actually, it's for, it's for the gym, it's for the gym. Um, I mean, obviously, the number of students in Lakewood tends to go up slightly every year, but this is not for, you know, any kind of tremendous influx in students, no.
Okay, and so you have adequate enough room should you need an extra bus?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, so who's this? Levy?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just think for record, I was listening, I was listening to the township meeting. Everybody introduces themselves every time when they make a motion to keep a record. It's hard to, we don't see everybody's face right now.
Understood. I just don't understand, Mrs. Weinstein, when you say there's not a major increase in students, what do you mean? You mean from the proposed plan back in 2016?
No, so there's obviously more students than there were in 2016. In 2016, I don't even think they had a full, four, four full years of, four full classes of the high school. Um, I'm saying in general, it's, this, this plan is not because they're planning on, you know, adding the tremendous amount of students to the school, just the normal amount of additions that get added each year in Lakewood. Yes, there are more students than there were in 2016, but there aren't significantly more than there were in 2020. This, this whole site was operating as both an elementary school and a high school for not only 2016, but 2018, 19, and 20.
So again, though, how many students are currently housed in the current building?
I believe it's slightly over, between both buildings, somewhere around a thousand. Between the two. The high school itself, I.
Mary, I'm confused, I'm sorry. What two buildings?
I, I.
No, no, right now, there's one, I'm sorry, you're correct. Right now, there's one building and it's operating as, it's housing both an elementary school and a high school. Hence the need for us to get this approved quickly.
How many students is that?
I believe there's about a thousand students between the two schools. This is a very large school.
And the new structure will add an additional?
The new structure, that's what I'm trying to explain to you. The new structure is not adding students. It's just moving the high school out of the elementary school building, which doesn't really have room for it.
Allow me to rephrase, allow me to rephrase.
Sure.
How many students can fit into the current structure? And how many more students can fit into the proposed structures?
Glenn, can you answer that? How many students would fit in?
The, the new, the new high school had 25 students per class and 16 classrooms, and I can't do math in my head anymore.
I got it, it's 400. I just, I just used the calculator.
So that's, that's 400 students on the, in that school.
In the new building, in the high school building, in the high school building, they can fit 400 students. And I believe they have about 371 currently.
So again, so just, I want to just make sure this is on the record. There are currently 1,000 students. And with this new building, it will have the capability for 1,400 students. Is that correct?
That sounds, that sounds close to the correct number, yeah.
Okay, is this, is this proposed facility going to have a basement?
No.
So there's no plans for a wedding hall here?
No, the new school, it will not have a wedding hall. It doesn't have a basement. Uh, it's a single-story building.
And there's no plans for any kind of semchah hall at all?
No, there's no basement at all. It's all classrooms, you know, an all-purpose room.
Have it do.
Again, for the record, are they proposing to make any semchahs in?
No.
You should, thank you.
No.
Okay. Glenn, is there anything else in the report that you want to go through or you agree with the rest of the report?
No, it's, it's, uh, the same report we had when we approved, we approved the board the last, so I don't have any problem with any of the comments.
Through the chair, this is Justin. Glenn, can you just talk about the parking calculation again?
Okay, so the parking calculation is based on three three spaces per classroom and one space per office or tutor room. And give me one second. So that, based on the number, I counted the number of classrooms and tutor rooms today. And I worked out to 176 required spaces.
And that's between, that's between the existing classrooms and the proposed new classrooms? And that's between, that's between the existing classrooms and the proposed new classrooms?
Both buildings.
Both buildings?
Just say, as buildings. In both buildings, we require 176 by the ordinance, and we're at 207.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other board members have any questions from engineer? Seeing none, well, I would open it to the public. Uh, Leo, Mr. Jackson, do we have any correspondence on this application?
I did not see any correspondence on this. Ali, did you?
No, I don't have any.
Okay, so I would close it to the public. And I would ask for a motion.
There was no permanent sidewalk waiver with this, was there?
No, the plan shows sidewalk across the front of the property.
I'm sorry, I lost you. There, there is or there's not?
There is, there is proposed sidewalk on the plan. Thank you.
Okay, I would ask for a motion on this application.
Um, Chaim, Chaim Sable just sent the message that he's trying to.
I'm sorry, hold on. I have a couple of our callers muted, cause I was getting a lot of background noise. Um, they're all unmuted now and the, the chairman has asked for a motion.
Hello, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yes, hi.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm trying to talk earlier when we, we.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Not your fault, not your fault. I, I mean, we have, I mean, following up on Mr. Isaacson's concern, we have two rooms, one is 7,000, one is 5,000 square feet. We have a kitchen that's leading off of these rooms. We have sufficient bathrooms. Uh, how do we know this is not gonna end up being a simcha? And what can we do to prevent it?
Okay, fir- first of all, even if it is a simcha, I think they have, they're testifying, they have ample parking. They have much more than they need. They need 176. Uh, we have to ask Glenn. I mean, I think they said they have 17, they need 176. And all they're giving, they're giving 207. Glenn, should you use that room for a hall? How many parking spaces would you need?
Um, I can imagine you would need more than 50, 60 spaces, but that would be, you'd have to do it off, you know, when the school's not open.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I think this is moot. He said he's not using it as a simcha hall. He put that on the record.
I know, but Mr. Sable just was, okay, we could put on the record, Mr. Sable just asked if they use it for the record. Uh, how, what, what do we do? So I'm just saying that we.
It, it's perjury. He just put it on the record, under, under oath that he's not doing it. So why, why get into that?
Okay, no problem, no problem.
Can we get a sidewalk?
Hello?
Can we get a sidewalk from?
One second, Mr. Sable, one second. Mr. Sable's talking. One at a time, please. Mr. Sable, please continue.
So can we get a sidewalk leading from James Street to the building, to the main building and to the back building?
We can, I, well, there's, there's sidewalk. Basically sidewalk around the grammar, the grammar school, all the way around the school to the back. Then there's a, a crosswalk across the parking lot, and a sidewalk across the island, and another crosswalk, and that gets you back to the, um, back to the high school. If it's a matter of another hundred feet of sidewalk to get from James Street to One Piece, we can definitely.
Okay, thank you. I think Rabbi Hess wanted to say something.
Yeah, I would like to say something. Thank you very much.
Wait, you need to be sworn, Rabbi. You need to be affirmed.
Yeah.
Rabbi Hess, Mr.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony before this board with the truth, the whole truth, and that's true?
Yeah, and that's why I'm talking now, because I wanna be truthful. And I don't know who this is that's so against.
Uh, please state your name for the record.
My name is Debbie Hen. I'm the dean of my high school and my elementary school.
Okay.
I'm, I'm a little disturbed. I don't know who this is that wants to put me in jail if I make a sim, if I make a simcha in that big room. It's not proposed for a simcha room, but if I happen to make a simcha there, I don't think I should be sitting on in jail. Joe Biden should be put in jail before me.
Okay, okay, let's uh, no politics.
I, it, well, it's, it's, I.
Again, so again.
It's on the perjury. If I go ahead and I make a simcha in a room, that's what we're talking about over here? I don't think a school, a high school, for desperately need girls that don't have schools, I go out, I'm putting out my, my life for this school, and then he's gonna go ahead and throw me in jail because I make a party there? What's going on here?
Okay, your testimony from your professional is that you're not using the hall. Uh, are you saying that you wanna use the hall?
I'm sa, I'm saying it's made for the girls, for whatever they need. If I happen to make a party there, don't throw me in jail.
Rabbi Hess, Rabbi Hess, what is your intent, is your intention to use that room as a simcha room or it's used as a room that's used for the school?
But the room is used for the school. But if I once in a while, if I wanna make a party there, or someone wants to make a party there, I don't wanna be thrown in jail.
Okay, any school function, uh if you have anything for the school, that, that's a lot. It's not called making a simcha. Simcha, uh, simcha.
I'm trying to make a, uh, uh, my son gets engaged or my daughter gets engaged, and I wanna make something there. I don't wanna have issues. And I think it's wrong for someone to bring that up.
Okay, so, look, we have to make sure, uh, first of all, your testimony has to be that if you wanna use it, you have to just say that you wanna use it. I mean, your testimony told us that you're not using it. If you wanna use it, then we have to just make sure you have enough parking, should you make a simcha.
Parking, they have no issue with parking, and there's plenty of parking there. Go to other places where there's issue with parking. Um, James Street, I, my, my school there, there's no issue with parking anywhere. I have plenty of parking all over the place. Until now, I had on that, issue with parking. I don't have an issue with parking, cause other sites in Lakewood, there's issue with parking, not here.
Through the chair, through the chair, can I, can I interject here?
Yes, uh, Mr. Justin, please go ahead.
As the, as the planning board, or, or what, what we're trying to determine is what you wanna do inside the building. That's why we asked if there's gonna be a simcha hall. Your professional stated on the record that there's not gonna be a simcha hall. If, if, if you're saying that you wanna utilize it for a simcha hall, then I think the other plan board members question of whether or not there's adequate parking for that is legitimate. Your, your professional, I, I, I understand your testimony that you're saying that you, that you feel you have enough parking if you wanna make a simcha in the, in the building. So I think we should go back to your professional and ask him also his professional opinion if you would make a simcha inside, inside that, that building, which is fine, if that's what you're telling us. We just wanted, we just wanted to know, that's all.
Okay, but do you agree that he should go to jail?
I'm, I'm here to.
Okay, one at a time, please. I'm, I'm, Justin, please continue. Justin, you were speaking.
Yeah, if, if your, if your intent is to use the building as a simcha hall, I think we should go back to your professional and we can ask Glenn, Glenn, do you think there's adequate parking to utilize that building as a simcha?
Okay, Mr. Flansbrough, just one thing. I think before that, we should ask Glenn, how big, big that room is and how many people fit in that room? According to, according to, we will know, do we have enough parking? Does it fit a thousand people in there or 200 people? We know how much parking we have. So Glenn, the question is to you. Please answer.
Give me one second. Does that pull out the architectural plan? The, it's about uh 7,600 square feet, all the purpose room. So, and it's one per, you know, one person per 25 square feet.
It's one per 25 and one per 15 on the.
So one per, I, I read one. Is.
1.25?
Looking at 500 people, I mean, that's, that's your, at your, one per 15, I think that's crazy. But, um, and we have 207 spaces. So we're still, we're parked for anything to go on.
Glenn, how many people can you fit into 6,000 square feet? Or rather, 7,000?
Please, the, the, the square footage of the room that we're talking about is 7,500 square feet. And at, at one person for every 15 square feet, which is taken with one of the board members asked, that comes out to 500 people.
And we have the gym room as well that we can utilize. We're not going to jail, we're asking questions.
Okay, uh, let, let, let me put a proposal out. Rabbi Hess, would you agree if you, if you have, but, but everybody has to be relaxed. You agree that you have uh 207 parking spaces, uh, that you, you limit that you wouldn't make a, a, a simcha hall more than, let's say, 250 people or 300, because you, cause you have couples. So give us a, a, a number that you feel, 500, you don't have the parking. What number do you feel that will be the maximum that you would make a simcha there and that you have adequate parking?
You, you tell me, whatever the parking is, 350 enough? Is the parking for 350?
If you have couples, if everybody comes on couples, uh, you have 207, so technically you have up to 400. I mean, Glenn, are you there?
Right, that would be, that would be your maximum would be like two per car, 400 people, you have two extra spaces.
Okay, okay, would you agree maximum not to have more than 400? That's the parking that you have?
Yes.
Okay, that means you can't make a wedding of 500 people.
I'm not looking to make a wedding.
I, I.
Look, and that, my goal is not for a simcha hall. But before, I don't know who this guy is, but he says, oh, this is on, it's gonna be perjury if I have a simcha hall.
Okay, okay, okay.
I don't want that. I don't want that. Everything legally, and there's other places where you could run.
Rabbi Hess, we just have to have a clear record, that's all.
You just wanna, you just wanna get the record straight, Rabbi. There was nobody, nobody was accusing anybody of that.
Okay, so you're, you're, okay, so your testimony is that you're not, you're not making official simcha hall. Should you use it, you're limiting yourself maximum to 400 people you're allowing in the building because you have 207 parking spaces. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, uh, same, saying that, do any board members have any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, the one concern I have, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but the application here is not for a simcha hall.
I, I understand.
But so, but, but to say you could have 400 people at a simcha hall, that's a completely different application than he applied for.
No, so what I'm saying, I think like every other school has, they don't have an official simcha hall, but they do rent out their dining room or lunchroom, uh, and they make parties over there. And I'm just limiting parties, if they do rent it out, to 400 because to make sure that we have enough parking.
You know, and how many parking spaces are there for 400 again? I know Mr. Lyons went through it, but.
207. Assuming you have, uh, couples come, so you have, that's roughly rounding off to 400 people. And again, we're not making a simcha hall over here, but should the school use it to rent it out for a party, we're maximizing they can't have more than 400 people, cause we wanna make sure we have enough parking. Is that agreeable to the board members?
Technically, he has 1,200 square feet of empty space. That's about 800 people, just putting on the record.
Okay, so, uh, Chaim, I think we limited it up to 400 maximum, there's not a bring in there. I think, I think the applicant agreed to, to, to the number 400. Because that's how much parking space we have. Uh, he could have a thousand, he could put a thousand people in there, but he agreed not more than 400 to rent out at one time.
Correct.
Okay, uh, based on that, I would ask for a motion on this application.
Chaim will make a motion with the sidewalk on throughout the entire side, side, from the front, James Street to the building and to the main building, and no rentable simcha hall.
Hey, do we have a second on that?
Second. Sorry, I was muted. I'll second.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flansbrough?
Yes.
Mr. Herzl?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
I just wanna clarify with everyone, the motion was no simcha hall, not 400 people, not 300 people, not 100 people, no simcha hall, right?
I'm gonna put the word of no rentable simcha hall, rentable simcha hall.
It was no rentable, it makes a function that could, they could do something.
The, the school events.
400 people.
Right.
School events, okay, okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, that, that non-rentable should, should also include meaning not more than 400 people, obviously.
Correct, yeah, the way I understood the motion, what I said, up to 400 people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We have anything else on the agenda? Oh, that's. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bills, we have a motion to approve bills?
Aye, move.
Move, move the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Um, now that everybody here. We, we have a meeting next week. Does anybody know if they're available next week?
I am iffy right now.
For next week, what about in August, 4th or 11th?
I don't know that, I don't know that far in advance.
Okay, I, I would like, when I speak to the board members, to have at least five members that we can go through all the agendas and.
I'll be there the whole month.
Okay, I should be here also. If we have three more members, uh, we can switch off and try to have a forum every week. Next one. Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a good night.
She'll be around next week.
Everyone stay healthy.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.